Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas School Committee meeting for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. The call meeting to order at 7:01. Everyone who have brought their questions.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Oregon, whose nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. And we do have a Zoom link. If anybody has any questions they can send in. And Dr. Veer is keeping an eye on that. We are also being livestreamed on YouTube. And we do have two student representatives from the middle school. Evan Pompfret and Angelina McLeod. If you want to come up right up here.
Good evening. My name is Angelina McLeod. I am here with Evan Pompfret. We are both eighth graders running for positions on the Student Council. This year, we are going very well. This year has been going very well in the middle school despite only being in person two days a week.
Our sports teams are practicing and competing regularly. Cross-country has been underway and runners are improving weakly. There are two more meets left, one tomorrow at Sutton to make up the race against Oakdale next week. Boys and girls JV soccer is also wrapping up their seasons with makeup games in a couple of weeks. The girls' record is one win, three losses, and one tie. And the boys' is two wins and three losses.
Yearbook meetings have started virtually and they are coming up with creative ways to get the pictures. A survey will be going out to students this week in order to come up with a theme. Last week, picture day took up place on Monday for Cohort A and on Friday for Cohort B. Remote students signed up for times in order to come and get their picture taken. The process ran smoothly and with social distancing measures in place.
The middle school Student Council has started the application process. Anyone interested in running as a representative have joined the Google Classroom set up by Mrs. Hayes and are completing an application in signature form. Elections will be held November 9th and 12th and the first meeting will be held via Zoom on Wednesday, November 18th. We're hoping to come up with creative ways to bring school spirit and have fun as a community. Mrs. Tumilio is also looking for eighth grade officers for the class of 2025. Also, students who are interested in running for a position should be contacting her this week. Elections for this position will be held next week.
The middle school open house was held on Thursday, October 29th from 5:30 to 7:00. Each grade presented virtually with a slide deck presentation and left the room for questions and comments at the end. The teachers and Mr. Delaney were impressed with the turnout and felt the event was successful. On Wednesday, October 28th, Mr. Delaney gave a virtual tutorial on Google Classroom. He had two sessions and it was open to all middle school parents. It was helpful presentation for parents to understand the ins and outs of the platform their children are using daily.
Parent-teacher conferences are coming up quickly. Teachers will be available to meet with parents on November 16th from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. On November 17th from 11:40 to 2:10 p.m. The link scheduling meetings will be made available on November 5th at 5:00 p.m. Teachers will be meeting with parents in teams of two. This significantly increases the number of meetings that teachers can interact with parents. That wraps up the middle school news. Thank you for having us and enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any questions for our middle school presentations?
Great job.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, too.
Okay, we set aside a piece for public comment and communications. I don't see many people here, but if somebody has a Zoom comment they can ask.
There's anyone else who might have.
And then, any old business? Any new business? Seeing that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Welcome, everyone. Courtney was saying, "You gonna talk about COVID again, Paul?" The answer is yes. So I just want to spend some time talking about the letter I sent out to the community on Monday. One of the big reasons I sent that out is just to be proactive and inform people as to where we stand and where we could potentially be in the next four to six weeks. The governor said it, the commissioner said it, what we've seen locally, schools are not a super spreader or a spreader for the virus at this time. But things could change. One of the reasons I sent the letter out was to ask the community for help. I'm nervous with Halloween that we might see a spike in cases and I'm nervous with a polities around the corner of us seeing a potential spike in cases. So I wanted to inform people as to the metric that we looked at and what could potentially happen. At the beginning of the school year, school committee adopted a metric as to what would we use as a guide to move from one platform to another. The guide says that we need to stay in the red in three areas for three weeks following any significant incident. Major incident would be, for instance, we've seen it across the Commonwealth, a part of the 40 or 50 kids at the high school where a kid just run over the woods and then a high school has to close, or a major spike in a school with eight, 10, 15 people getting infected. We obviously wouldn't wait three weeks for that to occur. The three data points we look at are cases per 100,000. We've been in the yellow for the past three weeks, but I think this week we're going to be in the red with this spike. Every communities have been in the red for three weeks. When we looked at the spectrum putting it together and through our discussions with the DT over the summer, there was a concern with us doing a lot of sports with other communities and the travel between the communities, that there could be people. Us going to other communities and other communities coming here, so we use that as a metric. And then we also use the state positivity rating. That is now at 1.8 when I did this. We look at some other metrics that we look at. For instance, we've seen a great spike in communities across the Commonwealth in the red. We're at 121 communities, which is basically one-third of all communities in Massachusetts. That's a 57% increase from last week to this week. People have asked what we're going to do. Right now, we're going to maintain status quo. But if we continue to see a rise in the data, if we continue to see a spike, if we continue to see Douglas move, have more and more positive cases, us go in the red, we could very well be having a discussion in the next three, four, five weeks as to whether or not we need to stay in a hybrid model or we need to move to a remote one. Obviously, if there's a major incident, we would react and respond to that accordingly. But I wanted to inform the committee and the community that we need their help, we need to make sure we're practicing social distancing, we're wearing masks, we're washing our hands. The governor's helped us out a little bit. Penny, where you're here with the advisory in terms of trying to cut down the social gatherings, the small parties, the information that's coming out of Beacon Hill to us is that the spread's coming from indoor dining and from small gatherings that over the summer happened outside and now happening inside, which is one of the reasons why he put some of those provisions in place. So we're asking for the community's help to adhere to some of those guidelines and help us stay open for as long as we can for our kids. We know that in-person learning, having the kids here, having them with adults, having them with their peers is a lot better than having them at home. So I share that with the community and I want to have the opportunity to discuss it here with you at the meeting.
Anyone?
If there are questions.
I don't have any questions. I think everything that you're saying makes sense to me. I hope that people will take their right precautions to help keep our kids in schools as possible. If we do get to a point where we need to go full remote at some point this year, and I, you know, I think we said it over the summer, like things were not at their worst, no one would be surprised if we have to, if every school in the Commonwealth has to go full remote at some point this year. But if we do, I know that at the last meeting we talked about mixed feedback in terms of the amount of work and in terms of the amount of time on Zoom. I've heard that sort of echo throughout the community, some families really struggling with their, their children struggling with being on meetings for so long, or their children not having enough work or having too much work. I guess it's not so much a question, it's something that I'd like to put out there that as we've been flexible through this whole process, that we sort of try our best to continue to be flexible and maybe charge the principals and teachers who have seen how we can adapt to individual things of students, not necessarily if they're on an IP or anything like that, but, you know, I'm struggling with that because if kids have to be at home all the time, are we giving them what they need? So if somebody needs more, can we give them more? If somebody needs to take a break from a Zoom, can they have that break? And any teacher to know that they have the liberty to say, "Okay, Suzy loves being on a Zoom, she can stay as long as she wants. Johnny can't deal with it, after 20 minutes, let him go," or whatever. You know, I'm not trying to make those decisions for you, but I think that that's a conversation I hope would kind of continue as to how to give students what they need.
And as we did the survey with the community about three weeks ago, we did get, it was consistent in principle, it's too much work, not enough work, too much Zoom, not enough Zoom. So again, teachers are trying to find that middle ground. When I sent the letter out, I got four emails. I got two emails back from parents saying, "Thank you for being proactive, we understand, health and safety are critically important, we understand why you might have to close." And then I got two emails from parents that said, "Please don't close, screens out soon to spread this, we need our kids in school." So I think it's split. And yet it's finding, I said this last, it's finding that sweet spot as to what's enough Zoom and not too much Zoom and where the work piece of it's always come up. If you go back prior to Zoom, you always hear, "My child gets too much homework in grade three, not enough homework in grade four. This third grade teacher gives a lot of homework, this third grade teacher doesn't." So we've always kind of tried to deal with that inside our school, open as far as the kids get older.
Correct.
Now we're trying to figure out that comfort zone for the Zoom and for work and some kids are flying through it and others aren't. We're trying to adhere to the mandate from Jesse in terms of having time on learning and having the kids engaged in learning for six, seven hours a day, which is a full school day. So it's tough. I forget if I said here about one of the things we saw, some of the feedback from the middle school was teachers were going online for 45 minutes, then giving kids 15 minutes to start their assignments, but a lot of the kids were just going off. And Mr. Delaney calls it the Xbox dilemma. You're finished, you see the school board, you see the Xbox, you have 15 minutes, what do you do? And you have all the kids going to the Xbox. Then at the end of the day, when they should only have an hour of homework, they have two, two and a half. So some of it's that time management executive function that some of the teachers are trying to work on with the kids.
Yeah, I think we've all seen the comments, you know, like you said, there's a real split. Some people are, "Thank you for being proactive," and some are, "The kids need to be in school." And I totally understand that education is important and why we're here, I would just like people to also remember that we are a community, we have children, we have adults, we have all ages in the school, we have people with families with other factors outside of the school, and it would be, we're missed to think that we don't take that into consideration as well. I understand, you know, the spike that's in Douglas, we've been lucky that it's not in the schools right now, but we're a small community and when you have that many people in town who have been exposed, who have been sick, who are in the hospital, you're going to end up with some crossover and I think we need to take that into consideration as well.
And the board has been wonderful contact, we, on a regular basis. We've seen a case, Paul, we have a case, you might want to look into this, it's related to the school. We have a case, we did our contact, Tracy doesn't have anything to do with school, it's an elderly family. They'd be fantastic keeping us involved and informing what's going on.
Anything else?
Yeah, is this going to mean that, or this will have any impact on which planes worked for the winter? We're not going to impact that yet, right? Or we don't plan on it at this time?
So we still don't have an official stat date for basketball. I had a conversation with Mr. Martin, we still don't have an official sports date for basketball. We don't know what's going to happen indoor track. They're really struggling with putting indoor track together because anyone who's been to an indoor track meet knows you're packing 600 people into a space and probably should only hold 400. So we don't know what indoor track, and we also don't know what's going to happen with basketball. If we have to shut down, if, let's say, we start basketball season and we have to shut down, that will put a stop to the basketball season.
From my understanding, is the IAA has already canceled all tournaments for winter sports?
They have. Basketball would happen, again, we couldn't stay, we couldn't be closed during the day with the kids and open in the afternoon for sport, so. But if we closed the primary or the elementary school, for instance, and left the high school open, then obviously we could continue doing the cohort equals and in sports for kids.
I just have one other question.
Go on.
Relatives of kids who meant help, are, I know that it's impacting children in ways that are just twirl right now. Are we being proactive and like kind of touching, I know they do some kind of screen thing, what are you feeling and all that, but like, how are we able to kind of connect with these kids, not just like with adults, but like allow them to be with their friends in some sort of way? But also an adult too, because like these kids are like locked in their rooms during the day and we don't know where they're going.
That's a good question. I know we have, we have our screeners, we have our, we have our check-ins daily, grades K to eight, we have a morning meeting which kids attend, they have that one check-in with the teacher, the staff, the school, they are. I know all four schools have what they call a student concern list where teachers put on the student's name, what their concern is, and then what they've done to triage. So for some instances, the concern might be academic and the teacher might say, "I've called home, I've emailed a parent, I've spoken with a parent, and I offered this," and then we bulked up to maybe of the adjustment counselor to do something. Sometimes it's a social emotional concern and that would trigger the adjustment counselor or the assistant principal, the dean to have a contact with the parents. I know that all principals have had kids come in and parents come in where there's some social emotional issues and have some discussions, that's how they can do it, but we're trying to do best to catch it. If people know of kids or parents that have the kids who are struggling, reach out to us and we can provide some resources to families.
Yeah, I mean even like me personally, like trying to get my first year to do the work, it's just, it's a battle, it's a lightning one, because I don't, I don't know what to do, really. Do your work, why? Well, because you're supposed to. Oh, why do I have to do it if I'm like, you know, it's just, it's hard because they're on their own, you're just doing whatever, and then they get busy work, so, you know, it's just, it isn't, this is really easy to find, really hard.
It's very difficult. And the teachers are struggling with it, the kids are struggling with it, and parents are struggling with it. We had a meeting yesterday with superintendents in Worcester County, we talked about some of the issues and struggles, and it's all the same in Worcester County. We're hosting Blackstone Valley Superintendents here on Friday, and one of the things on the agenda is how we deal with many of the issues. I believe it was Northbridge. Northbridge earlier this week sent something out to teachers and they're trying to get area teachers to get together to share our best practices. We had a half dozen teachers joining with Northbridge and Oxbridge, Sutton was part of it, Milford, it was about 10 schools who were all part of it, where teachers got together by age group and talked about best practices. So we're trying to provide some resources and supports to teachers who's will that in turn help kids out, but it's a real struggle. I wish I had my answers to this one, but.
No, I know, and I do have to say that, like, thank God for the support that we have right now. I just like to hope that we don't lose them because they are just, some of the only things the kids have really to look forward to, you know?
Correct.
That and going to school.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
So I'll let go of everybody else's space if they said it, I think it's a struggle. I mean, the community itself has spoken, so as we've seen enough, they spoke, or interactions with both of these, they said, "It's a struggle. I mean, I struggle. It's trying to find that balance." But I think if they're putting forth the effort to get into the classroom, the teacher to recognize that, they can make up the work. Yes, it'll come, but it's that flexibility and finding that common ground for all, because some kids really love it and thrive in that and other kids just hate the Zoom. It's finding that balance. And I think we're all hearing from the community, the world working with you, the superintendents, the teachers are hearing it. It's a collaboration on both sides. I think we'll find a happy medium, we just haven't gotten it here yet to figure out what that happy medium is, because we don't know what's coming at us next. So I'd like to take the schools open as long as possible, but I think it's coming faster than we think.
Correct.
It's coming, and the holidays are right on the corner and if the community doesn't do their part to help us take the kids in school, they're done. And that is, and I think for the entire community is all the kids home, because that helps nobody.
We had a conversation earlier this week, France shut down, but now their schools open. So if we see it exploding in Europe, and we saw it, we saw what happened, St. Louis and the King here in March and April, it's already moving in Europe and the fear is that we're going to get that wave here shortly.
Can I just add?
Sure.
Especially after throwing that out there. I know it's a tall ask for any teacher that may be watching, to say like, "Hey, can you individualize it some more for all of the students?" But I would like to add, you know, the other day I was thinking about it and going into this fall, I remember all the sort of, you know, the buzz was, can we do it? Kids aren't going to keep their masks on, parents aren't going to like do, remove it, change their schedules, it's not going to, it's not going to work, it's not going to work, hybrid's not going to work, doing COVID's not going to work. And I just want to say like, you know, I'm amazed and impressed, I'm like really proud of all the students and staff here, because they're making it work and I think that that is just really awesome. So again, I just hope that we all kind of, as a community, continue to help them make it work, because the kids want to be in the building, they're doing the best that they can, they're doing their part, so we should do ours too.
The kids have been, the masks was a real concern. The kids have been fantastic with the masks. We were even concerned with the six feet social distancing and it's funny, I walk in the halls, I was in the elementary school a couple days ago, and you see the kids walking and they get too close and they stop and they wait for the kid to go, and then they keep on walking, while they're walking the halls with their arms up because they know that's about a six foot span, they're getting it, they're trying, and they're like, you see them coming off the bus, staggered, you see them staggered going along the bus, so they're trying, they're trying to do, trying to do the right thing. And it was interesting, we had the professional development day two days, two weeks ago, we asked the staff, "What are some tweaks and changes that we can do?" And I thought they were going to come up with some bigger things, and some of the feedback that they gave the principals was, "We're just hitting our groove, let's not change too, too much because we're starting, we're starting to get, so let's not completely change things now that we've started to get, let's wait a little bit longer." So we'll see what happens over the next few weeks with that. Which kind of ties nicely to the learning halls, and I just want to review these. Obviously, the goal is fully in person, and it always has been, always will be. Right now, it's not a reality of where we're at, but ultimately, that's where we want to be. In terms of hybrid, as I said, I'm going to share some stuff out this week in my newest letter, as was the principal, we're going to make some changes to the current hybrid model, real small, we're going to see some more small groups, we're going to ask for more mandatory Zooms for kids, we're going to try to eliminate that option for kids to maybe like have to log on. So we're going to see some changes in the hybrid model to try to increase productivity and to get more kids actively engaging. The other thing I asked principals who do Zooms to come up is, if we need to shut down, what will the remote model look like? In grades K to eight, it's going to look very similar to what it is. Mr. Ramado at the high school is either looking at doing a full seven-day period with class meeting, every class meeting for 42 minutes, going back to the old schedule, which is five on, two off, or doing the 90 minutes, day A, day B, every other day. So I told him I wanted something by the end of the week, so he's looking at those three models. So if we need to shut down, we can share that immediately with the others. The next piece is what I'm calling Phase Two. And we started those discussions and we know that coming back full in person for every student probably isn't going to happen this year. But we need to look at expanding our hybrid model and expanding what we're doing and changing. Here's what I mean by that. Principals, families, teachers have expressed concerns about our early elementary kiddos and what's going on with early elementary kids. How can we bring back more of our elementary kids to school? It sounds easy, but there are a lot of obstacles that we need to look at and a lot of things we need to do in order to make that happen. Do we have the space? Do we have the staff? If we bring back our early elementary kids, what will recess look like? What will lunch look like? How are we going to share special area teachers across two different platforms? Transportation, we thought the governor was going to, I'm sorry, the commissioner was going to loosen some restrictions on the buses, he hasn't yet. We can't fit both Cohort A and Cohort B on the bus, so how do we get our elementary kids back? So we're investigating that, we're looking at that. Our middle school and the high schools looking at how can we get kids in front of teachers on a more regular basis, which is critically important. It's happening more at the middle school than it is at the high school, but again, if we make a change, because we share buses, we can't have the middle school on a week on, week off schedule and the high school on an every other day schedule, because then we'd be mixing cohorts. So Mr. Ramado, Mr. Delaney, we need to have a conversation about how to make that work. So I've asked principals to send to me a proposal for opening things back up by Monday. My hope is to present at the next school committee meeting to what Phase Two would look like. I want to be clear, it's going to take a lot of time, it's going to take a lot of work, it's not all going to happen at once. It may happen at the high school and the middle school on December 1, it may happen at the elementary school on January 1, it may happen at the primary school on February 1. And this is all depending on the pandemic and if we see a spike or if we see a decline in the data. But we are looking at, looking at ways as to how we can bring more kids back into school, do it safely, do it within the six feet, but just people have to understand that it's not as easy as just bringing people back. There are a lot of X's and O's we need to, we need to look at. Transportation and space and staff being some of the major obstacles and scheduling, we're looking at that, we'll handle all that in the near future. Next, we have Power Professionals Union. I would hear people want to speak on it, but I just wanted to inform the committee that earlier this week, I received notification from the Department of Labor that the Dallas teachers, Dallas Power Professionals have decided to formalize and collaborate with the Mass Teachers Association. We received a letter probably a week ago stating from the Department of Labor that they're formalizing their union. Once that's done, they're going to send me something, where I have to submit a list to the Department of Labor on who the power professionals are in the district and then build a form us of next steps. At some point, I would imagine this year, we're going to have to sit down and look at creating a contract makeup. So that came out, the form we have been tenting a month ago, and I got the formal letter from the Department of Labor last week, so I wanted to inform the committee. I hope anyone wants to add to that, please don't put me on the spot.
No, put it, if you have any questions, certainly feel free to.
My question, as we look at opening negotiations again with the DTAs, does that mean that we would be...
that we would be including the parents in our negotiation with the DTA as we start negotiating that contract?
No, they would be separate.
Thank you.
So, so typically, what I see happening is the teachers would negotiate, once that negotiation is complete, we, we would negotiate with the power professionals.
Kind of like the new, the captain's year?
Correct.
We act, we actually originally were hoping to do it on the off year for teachers, but it doesn't look like it was going to fall that way, so it will, it will probably be on the same year as the teacher. It's 2020.
If we're going to do it, let's just do it all in one event. So that, that's going to occur this year, it's going to be the committee's attention. Joined in that with Jill Adams, we had 27 members of our senior class qualified for the scholarship. What kids have to do is they have to receive an advance on one of their MCAS scores, an advanced proficient on their other MCAS score. In addition to that, the combination of their MCAS scores have to put them in the top 25% of, of their class. What this does is this gives them, um, tuition credits to attend any public college in, in the Commonwealth. Those of us that are learning that now, there's tuition, and then there are fees, and the two are not the same.
But the tuition is still nice.
The tuition is still like, so Mr. Ramado ran some numbers forward, and he says, depending on where you go to school over four years, it can equate to $5,000 to $13,000 over a four-year period. So again, a, a nice. More than five to thirteen, but again, it's, it's still, it's still a nice, um, nice portion of money. I know we have one member of the school committee whose child was qualified for that scholarship, I don't know if she knows or if you went home and told her, but congratulations to Ethan, um, to Julie, but I just wanted to highlight those 27 kids, uh, in, in the public committee that, so we were really proud. Mr. Ramado tweeted that out. And the last thing which kind of ties it, it is the travel order from the government. It was just, I, I shared it out in my newsletter, I just want to highlight the importance of people following that, that travel order, which states that if you're going, if you're coming into Massachusetts from any one of the red states or the highest states, the advisory says that you need to provide a negative test 72 hours prior to entering into Massachusetts, or upon your arrival in Massachusetts, quarantine for 14 days. And, and I just, you know, I looked at, do I add to that? Do I go to Ohio State? I had a conversation with some other superintendents, I had a conversation with our school attorney, and they said, you're opening up and you're blocked because there's too many barriers that you can't account for. The only thing I ask is, is just some common sense where if you're going to test 72 hours prior to coming into Massachusetts, that you try to maintain a bubble in that timeframe from when you test to when you return back to the Commonwealth. Again, if you're, if you're, you're at Disney, and you test on Wednesday, and you're out, and you're not forced to distancing, and you're eating in restaurants, and you're flying, and you're not wearing a mask, that test that you took 72 hours prior is basically useless for when you come back. So just, if you're going to take that test, please try to maintain that bubble and follow, the guidelines that have been set for you before you, you come back. Again, we looked at trying to increase the guidance, but after I talked to every superintendent, thought about it some more, and we talked to our school attorney, he said we were just opening ourselves up to something that we couldn't really control or, or anymore, so. I will, if you have questions on the traffic order. All right. That's all I have, unless people have questions.
Thank you.
You're all right.
Is there anything on Zoom?
There is nothing on Zoom.
Okay. So we have an end of school committee and subcommittee report, the counts payable.
So on October 29th, I signed twelve captives totaling $296,885.86.
Thank you. And we have a consent agenda, the October 21st, 2020 meeting minutes. There's no issue, okay, for the motion.
We'll make a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes, right over 21st, 2020.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second to second. All in favor? And you're opposed? Thank you. And are you tailing the class trip?
Correct. I just wanted to get, you know, Mr. Ramado has to put the class trip to Disney on the agenda, and, um, I know our point is the kids in the community, but before we go and approve the class trip, I asked him to get out some more information. Again, we saw what happened last year, we saw how difficult it was to get refunds, we know how difficult it is to fundraise for it, so I just wanted him to get some more information before we approved a trip. So that could be taken on that.
And we have the school business and operations manager's report.
Um, just wanted to let you all know that I did finally submit the 2020 end of year report, yay! Um, so now I'm moving on to, um, bringing the FY 2021 budget up to date, so probably getting a lot of transfers and reclasses in the very near future. And, um, yesterday I did send out, um, forms to all of the administrators, um, for, to, in preparation for the FY 22 budget, so we're also working on that, and that's going to be due back to me, actually it's Tuesday, um, November 24th, I think it is, um, and then we'll be moving forward with getting that, um, budget prepared and preliminary budget to you, I imagine sometime in December.
I would love that.
And, uh, we'll all, yeah.
Thank you. Does anybody have topics that we anticipated?
I just got an email from the athletic director, who might have been watching, and he said that we voted to push back winter sports on until December 15th as the official start date. They're still waiting on guidelines, and then it's up to each sports committee to approve the modifications and make any adjustments. So still many steps before, um, basketball or indoor track for us would occur in, in the winter.
Okay. Any other topics that we need to state? Any need for executive session?
We do not.
Okay, and I'll be looking for motion in general.
I'm looking for a school committee meeting at 7:30, yeah.
Motion made by Becky.
Second.
May I have the, all in favor?
I don't know.
Thank you, everyone. The next meeting is on November 18th.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.